And then. And where are you? Are you on?
Uh, one of these, do you mind? Maybe two? Maybe. Blue Ray.
You have blue ray?
Yeah, maybe. Cause it came out of the player, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's the one. About, yeah.
There should be.
I see him.
Yes.
Footrest?
No, thanks.
Can feed up?
No, thanks.
Good evening, everybody. All of us, you know this meeting is being recorded. I'm going to call the board of the solid waste committee. Today is September 7th, 2022. It is 5:51 PM. If you can all stand for a little bit. With the flag of the United States of America and to the public, we will say this, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I think since we have a floor and it is supposed to be to call you back. Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the Dyton Board of Selectment and the Solid Waste Committee. At this time, I would like to call the order and I will request a voice. We'll call.
Ken Pacheco present? The chairman present?
Chairman Hollow is present. I would accept the motion to turn the meeting over to the Chairman of the Solid Waste Committee.
I assume. Second.
Motion being second. Hollow is in favor. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Count?
Aye.
Chairman Hollow is in high. Chairman Lawrence?
The Chair. So are we discussing accepting latex paint at the transfer station? So when we have our hazardous waste collection day, this is, we have a major concern for everyone. The question was, why can't we accept latex paint? What do we do with it? And Tom can elaborate a little more, how much gallons we probably have after that term.
Yeah, we had 177 cars show up. I would guess that about 120 of them had latex paint, probably to the tune of about 500 gallons of latex paint. So over and over and over again, I had to tell them what to do with it. Nobody was upset or angry, but it's a lot of paint that is being disposed of in the trash.
So my suggestion and proposal is that we accept latex paint at the transfer station by putting 55 gallon drums underneath where kind of like a shed is like where the people all like, you know.
The pink bag.
I believe. The, the pink bags. Everybody have any, like, guess what's wrong?
Question becomes the cost of disposal of that once those 55 gallon drums are. It's obviously just going to be a transfer station fee and somebody's going to probably recycle it, correct?
Um, possibly.
What do they do with it once we fill these barrels?
Well, some companies will take it and use it and sell it as some kind of paint. Or we can mix it with speedy dry and solidify it and dispose of it. We haven't looked into these options yet for prices because it's only happened like in the end of August for our solid waste fest. I mean, it hasn't twisted.
Mr. Chairman. Isn't the current policy now is that you just open up the can, let it dry out and quickly trash?
Kind of. So why is there need to collect it at? That's the policy. Everybody can do that, right? Why collect that at the transfer station?
Just see about, unless it's enough, like cars that come in with Elon, like, oh, what do you do with it?
So you tell them there's no cost to the town. Right?
Right. Household house's waste is free to everybody. The latex paint is, is regularly addressed, but a lot of them want drying it out. You get some that spills open in the barrel and the bins and they dump it out to the transfer station. I think where this step that John skipped is that if somebody comes in with a five gallon can, you charge them to take the latex paint.
Okay.
So you charge $3 a gallon or whatever and it's only that much left of a gallon. And by the time you collected 100 gallons of paint, you filled a 25 gallon bucket, but you collected $300.
So it's a revenue generator.
Not revenue, it's a cover, cover cost.
Obviously the cost.
500 gallons indicates that people desire to have a facility to get rid of the paint. I'd rather see it there than dump it.
Well, again, that's how this conversation started was kind of the topic, so.
I, I see the 500 gallons where we failed on educating them the proper disposal. So when we have, if we do collect it and, and I believe there's a problem if it freezes, uh, latex paint too. So that location you mentioned can freeze. So that's, that's a problem. It's when you take something while you're on it.
I agree. I think, if I may, I think that public education is paramount because I don't think the people at home realize that they can actually dispose of it. We've said it to a blue in the face, but I don't think the consumer is actually absorbing that.
Right. Obviously they're not if
Right.
we had that much, that many people bring it to the transfer station on the collection day.
The other thing is, you know, from a logistics perspective, you dump out a can of paint that has residual latex in it. That latex now has to dry before you put it in the bin. So that means we have to stack these containers somewhere until they're drying. So I just see that as a logistical nightmare for the transfer station where suddenly to me does it become you know, the, the revenue where they were generating doesn't really cover the cost because you've got to handle that paint can a couple of times.
Right.
Before you get rid of it. And then the freezing issue is another issue that now that paint is useless, it can't be used. So now it becomes where we now have to dispose of it ourselves in bulk form. So maybe education is first. You wanted, should we discuss how do we educate the public?
But it's, I think, uh, end goal here is going to result in some form of education is going to be less. Obviously, paint will be one of them. Buying a proper amount is part of it. That's part of the education part. Then disposals is the other part.
I'm not a social media guy at all, um, but can the board help do a quick video showing people how to get rid of their latex paint? And maybe you can send it out on Facebook or Instagram or whatever you do. Maybe people will actually watch it. I don't know.
Yeah, let's do this here.
So it depends on D J Julian.
Would be you might.
I'd like to ask some very questionable or to anybody that can answer this. Couple of years back, this out of the product stewardship uh, for paint. Massachusetts was dragging its feet and the approval of product stewardship for paint. Do you know?
Well, at least I, I believe it's possibly there in most stores, especially the big box stores, are supposed to take back the remaining paint. Yes.
No. You're talking like Home Depot, Home Depot and things like that?
Correct. And along with that is buying a proper amount. They're supposed to help you figure out the rate amount so you're not bringing back all.
Okay.
That even if they miss it, when they messed up or whatever, you still can dry it out, throw it out.
That's a partial solution, but like you said, you still need the education. So a lot of people know that, so it's.
But it can be an education on other things that we just, we talked about before, recycling. You throw away dirty stuff, they put styrofoam in, then you should be putting styrofoam. So maybe it'd be a whole education of what can you recycle? What can't be made? It was on the notice for this hazardous waste sale was clear, no latex paint.
It's all letters. Yep. And it even said how to dry it right next to it.
Yep, yep, so.
We should have gave them a sticker.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not totally simplifying this, but maybe, maybe they don't know it's latex paint. I don't know. You know, I know it's clear to all of us, but maybe they don't know that it's latex paint.
I mean, these people have had that, this stuff in the basements of the garages for years and just, so hazardous waste sales gather all this stuff uh, as opposed to thinking that it was latex or knew they could bring it back to home people or, you know, don't even remember where they got it.
So it needs to be discussed a little bit more. We do have a great community that wants to do the right thing.
Right.
Obviously, they hang on to something. They thought it was hazardous. It didn't just do something else and they brought it to us for help. We're not there yet. I think we have a very respective, respective or responsive community. So wherever the direction we're going, it should be well received.
Absolutely. In, in that first part of education is going to start at the transfer station. When people come to bring it, you have to say, you don't take it, but this is what you can do with it. It's going to be redundant, but maybe that along with mailing, when we do have a mailing is, is the answer. Tom says, we take it from you on. Yeah.
But it's not hazardous.
It's not hazardous, right?
I mean, I understand like propane or whatever else, that's, that's hazardous. That's a different animal.
Yep.
On to the next subject. For rediscovering act, transportation fee in 2023. Hey, Sean, a presentation on data question. I count these.
Hi, everybody. Good to see everybody again. So just to bring everybody up to speed in case you missed what I was doing last time. So this is part of my master program. This is part of my capstone program. I was looking for a project. I went to Mr. Mullin and I had to talk with him a couple of times. We came into agreement that Solid Waste Committee could hopefully use my skill set. So my background is going to be uh, public administration with a focus in government. So I've gone to school to learn how to do all the things nobody else wants to do. So it, it covers, my education covers a lot of background in terms of, uh, research, policy design, budgeting, that sort of thing. So this is where this is all kind of fitting in. Um, after last meeting, it became clear that the solid waste committee, um, you know, they were looking for a little bit more guidance and knowledge in terms of where they stand right now so they can make decisions going forward uh, about the solid waste program in Dyton. Up here on the screen and, um, in the handouts is just the beginning of some of the research I've done. So, um, now that my capstone semester is actually started by capstone, the project itself that I need to do is due in December. Um, but I will be here beyond that to see like this room to its fruition and then beyond, the committee feels that, you know, once you've gotten through and you've, you've used my, my skill set for what you need, I'd be more than happy to, to stick around with the committee if, you know, the skill set still needed or go elsewhere for the town. You know, if there's, if there's another committee or board that maybe needs a skill set that I have, I'd be more than willing to help. So the, the first thing I did was I went out and I started researching towns. I researched every community in the state and I came up with a short little punch list of communities. So there are 12 up here, 13 including Dyton. You can see we have some of our surrounding communities with the exception of Taunton because Taunton is really kind of outside of the scope in terms of what they offer. So a lot of these other communities, Berkeley, Rehoboth, Swansea, Somerset, those are our neighbors. They are more in line with the town and community itself in terms of population and how they operate. Uh, Taunton is on a different level because they are like a city. The other communities that you're going to see on here, Shirley, Halifax, Westminster, Upton, Lancaster, West Boylston and Hamilton. Those towns I took and I went by population first. So there is a population sway either above or below within a couple of hundred people of where Dyton is right now. So if you look at their populations, everybody in this population range is hovering somewhere between like 7,500 and 8,500 people, targeting Dyton to be right about 8,000. So then I had to go in and, uh, this is where it kind of got a little hairy. So actually I restarted this spreadsheet about three times before I finally came to a conclusion of what I thought was the best approach. When I started looking into these towns, all the solid waste programs are similar in the fact that, you know, the bones of the structure is you bring solid waste somewhere, get it collected, there's a fee associated with that above and beyond your tax base. The problem became is, as you can see, I've got some different categories that run across the top of the screen here, permits, fees, you know, TVs, small to large, et cetera, et cetera. Some of these towns went in and they really broke down every piece of what they take. So far as to go as like a DVD player costs this much, a VCR is this much, a mouse and keyboard is this much, so on and so forth. So what I did is, is I then took it upon uh, myself with a little bit of liberty to start grouping similar items together. So that's what we did. So for instance, like PC related electronics, that's going to be anything that's not a laptop or like the base tower. So that's going to be like your keyboards, a mouse, a controller, that sort of thing. Um, in there also with that related stuff will also be small things such as like a DVD player, a VCR, very, very small, compact electronical items. Um, and, and we'll kind of get into it as I go along. But basically what I did from that point is, is I got an average. So the numbers that you see here are only an average, a per item average. Right? So for instance, if you go to, uh, we'll take the town of Shirley, a PC related electronic, right? So let's say it's a mouse and keyboard. You may pay $5 for the mouse and keyboard, but you may pay $10 if you're going to want to dispose the VCR. Okay. I did the same thing in every category. When it came to furniture, when it came to mattresses, and I know that's probably the hot button that people really want to get to. Then we will. What I did is grouped it all together, averaged them out. So for every town going this way, we had an average. At that point, what I did is I took all the averages and I totaled them all up and I got all these towns here together, what the average cost was as a group, what they're charging. So for instance, TVs, small to large, the average cost in all these towns is $24. When you come down to the Dyton section here, which is in the blue, and then you see the red, green, yellow color code below. This is what Dyton is doing now. The color, the red, orange, green and yellow is the average offset, the average net offset, whether we're above, at, or below the cost. So one of the, um, one of the tough things which actually surprised me was the permits. So the permit fees. In Dyton here, right, we have one standard, it's like $15, right? Whereas some of these towns you're going to see a zero. They don't charge anything. Other towns you'll see like Berkeley, it's 37.50 for a car. They give like a $10 discount if you're a senior, but if you go to Lancaster, they're charging you on average, you know, whatever the average is per item, plus $3 per trip. And this is in addition to whatever the tax base is. If they, if you see a zero, the zero is going to indicate that that permit fee is included in your taxes. They don't pay for a permit. So you just bring your stuff there, you pay whatever the fee is per item and that's it. So at the end of the day, um, what you're probably really all wanting to know about is where does Dyton sit? In this spreadsheet in terms of what we're doing now compared to what everybody else is doing that's either our neighbor or something similar. So doing the best I can with the permits, uh, we're going to say that that is a net zero offset, even with Rehoboth at like $50, believe it or not, because so many other places are not charging anything or such a low fee that in terms of the permit that we pay for, it's pretty close to spot on. Uh, small to large average TVs. Um, we're, we're within about $4, give or take on the average. So we're about $4 less. Um, PC related electronics is seven. PCs themselves, so laptops, towers, we're about $4 under. Uh, the furniture, couches, chairs, uh, love seats, sectionals, pullout sofas, we're on the average about a dollar above. Right? So you're pretty much almost there. And then if I scroll over just a little bit without doing what I just did. Yep, of course. There we go. So when it comes to mattresses, towns did it one of two ways. They either charged for the mattress, didn't take the box spring, or one of three ways. They either just took a mattress and that was it. Mattress, no box spring. They charged mattress and box spring combo, or you paid mattress certain fee and then a box spring fee. Sometimes they vary. So again, what I did is I just took the average. Said, if you were to bring the item, mattress, box spring, combination separately. What is that average? So, um, right now in Dyton, we are about, wow, this was when it was at the $15 before, because I believe, if I remember, the committee raised it to 90. Did that go through?
All the committee does is make a recommendation.
They made a recommendation for 90. They are, okay. So right now we're, it says, we're about $5 under on average. I can't stress that enough is that this isn't average. Because for instance, if you go to like Rehoboth, right? You're looking at for a, a mattress and box spring combination is about $170 over in that town. Right? So you're, you're actually, you're kind of doing almost okay where you're at. It probably does need to come out maybe a little bit to try to cover that little bit of extra cost, but in the grand scheme of things, you're really not that far off. On most of this stuff, you're not that far off.
But isn't the mattress where our cost going up to 90?
It is, I believe. Is it going up to or at 90?
Right, I thought it was going to 90 as of.
That's what I understood.
Yeah.
That's right after our last meeting.
Yes, it, it was 90. We renegotiated it down to like 25 right now.
So that already happened? Renegotiation?
Yes, but only as a temporary measure until we institute one of the other mattress companies that we are considering.
Okay.
So just one question. I mean, like the analysis, the community by community analysis is helpful. Like it shows what, oh, you know, the community charges are. But is there any information you've been able to glean at all time, which actually, uh, which actually showed the community cost to accept? One of these things. So like we know on average, uh, that the average, that the average mattress fee that the community charged on average based on this information, um, add to $15, but that doesn't really oh, you know, show what the costs are.
Of disposal?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I have reached out to all those communities and I am waiting on all their responses currently. Yeah. So, uh, the, I did talk in person to, uh, two of them and they said that the price they're charging now covers like, you know, so like, uh, the town of Shirley, which is the first one, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Um, their vendors, um, you have to call. They don't even deal with it. So the, in the town of Shirley, if you want to have a piece of furniture or a mattress or a box spring, we, it doesn't, regardless of size. They have a number. You call down to the DPW, they give you a number for a vendor. You set up the pickup with the vendor and the vendor charges, the price is what the price is. So if the vendor wants to charge 25 bucks for the mattress, they're charging 25 bucks. If they want to charge $100, they're charging $100. Them folks set up their own pickup times and, and that's how they do it. When I looked at the other town they called was, um, Halifax. Halifax on the average is charging $23. And that's what the disposal, the rest of that disposal is like, I don't know how they, what feel they have or who they're using. I haven't gotten that information yet. But they're saying that it costs like, it costs that town like $21 to dispose. Now, I don't know if that's because of the contract they're under. Like Dyton's under a contract now that's, you know, y'all trying to work through their, I'm assuming their current contract for their disposal. There was one community, the community of, I have to go back and check my notes, I believe it was Lancaster, had a, uh, a green initiative where I believe this was mentioned, um, at the last meeting where the residents can actually kind of tear apart their own mattress, right? So they, they cut off the outer shell, they pull the stuffing out of it, they separate the metal and then they're able to dispose of it that way. But that is also done. Um, that's done through a regional disposal site. So I'll, when you get into the middle and the western part of the state, some of these towns don't have transfer stations. They have like, you know, a five town pact. They're almost in like a regional agreement and they go to one transfer site and that's what they're paying into some of these, some of these towns when you get out to the middle and western part of the state. So, um, but the long and short of it is, is I am waiting on that response to see what disposal cost is because I would like to give that one category, mattress disposal as a standalone category, hopefully by the time we meet again. Is my goal. Um, and then just moving on down the list. The, um, moving on down the line, the small metals and then the large metal stuff. Um, you know, again, the town of Dyton is, I know everybody sees right there like, what? But really, when you look at the numbers, on, on the average, again, this is for the average piece, the average cost of disposal per piece, the town is actually not in terrible shape. Like you're right there on the door, which I think made me think about the last time we were discussing this is that you know, the total cost right now of disposal at the transfer station, you're almost at a net zero, right? You're like, you're close. You, you're kind of there. It's 60,000 last year and you're collecting like 50. Is that number right?
Um, yes, the next page.
Do I remember that?
It's like 60 and 55.
Right. So, so you're, you're so, so close, which is why when you see like, you know, the numbers down here in the red, I know the, the red probably looks difficult. But you're close. You're like close, close.
I know we're not there yet, but does that include all the soft costs too, or is that just actual disposal permanent cost?
This, this right here does not include soft costs.
Right.
So it's just, yes.
So that's not a transition of the cost to get.
Right. And that's, that's kind of what I'm waiting on is the rest of that data to see like what the disposal fee is. So, you know, if you're like, if you're up in, uh, one, two, three, you're up in Halifax and the average cost of disposal for a mattress is $20, what is the real cost of disposal once it gets moving? So that, that's kind of like the, the information I'm waiting on. Um, I'm going to assume that some of these places, right? So when you look in terms of, um, some of these communities, right? So take for example, our neighbor like Somerset, a community like, uh, Halifax. Communities like that, um, it's not that they don't belong on that list, but they have a lot more business than Dyton does. Right? So they're going to have a lot more tax revenue generated, which is going to obviously help offset costs. You know, so this does not take that into account. Right? So the town of Rehoboth, I put them on here because they are our neighbor. They, they do border us. But really like, when you look at the cost of what it, it takes to dispose of something in Rehoboth, I almost want to take them off the list because the price is just so high. It's that super duper high outlier that, that could be skewed in the numbers.
But it's our neighbor, it's relevant.
Right. It's, and which is why they stayed on it. They're, they're relevant because they're literally right next door. Um, and then if we were to just move in, I haven't gotten here yet because I'm still waiting for more numbers to come in, which is why there are some blanks down here because towns are busy and they're like, you're a who? What's your name? You're from where? Yeah, we'll get to you, you know? Um, but when we look in terms of tires, um, this is a hodgepodge, but we're, we're in the realm. I mean, if you look at what we're doing here, the five, five, 10, 15, it, it's pretty close. Um, scrap metal. So if you look, this says minus two. I just didn't put it in red. So that scrap metal is going to be like propane tanks, fire extinguishers, that sort of. So that scrap metal is gonna be like propane tanks, fire extinguishers, that sort of outlier, you're close on there. And in terms of construction material, a lot of towns aren't doing it. A lot of towns just ain't taking construction material, like roofing material, insulation from like your attic and stuff, they're just not doing it. The towns that are doing it, you're about nine dollars on average above board per load. But if you look, it's one, two, three, four out of the, you know, four out of the twelve communities out there, so a third of them aren't even doing it. One of them's a zero five, so you're at almost half. If you, we're one town shy of like fifty percent, right? Aren't doing it or, or they're not charging, so. Um, but that's what I've done so far. I'm gonna collect a little more information, um, in terms of actual hardcore disposal costs. In terms of just the overall average per item cost, and we're Dayton's stand right now compared to similar or surrounding communities. Um, even though we're, it looks like we're a hair below, in the grand scheme of things, you're really close. Which is why the program at sixty thousand and you're generating revenues of fifty-five, it is putting you almost there, because you guys are that close, so. Right now, the way it stands, pending, pending the cost of, the actual cost of disposal. You know, a couple of tweaks here and there, and, and you guys could really be right in line with pretty much everybody else. And that's not, I haven't looked at any sort of, uh, I've not dug into any towns like, really like their guidelines, any of their bylaws related to solid waste yet. Which is all coming, it's just, you know, I gotta take it in hunks, I can only do so much at once, so. Good explanation, questions?
Why not, why not cancel the highest and lowest before they happen?
Um, so we could do that, but then that's gonna skew the data, because then, at that point, if we start like, we say, okay, we cancel that. What happens is, is the per, uh, when you looked, like if I were to put this into like my software, right? That would spit out like basically like a bell curve for us. If you stop cherry picking like these two towns you could eliminate, but on the next section, you're gonna keep them in. So in the grand scheme of things, at the end of the day, it kind of messes up the data track a little bit. So you're kind of gonna keep everybody in there with all their costs. You know, the super high like the Rehoboths and then the super low like Shirley that are charging nothing.
It's gonna be a reason why they're, you know. And the other thing as far as if, if the sticker price is a big deal. Everyone on that list has curbside pickup and they're not receiving tracks at the transfer station?
So many of the towns have curbside, but not all of them. Not, not every town has curbside. I could, I can go back and figure out which ones do and which ones don't, if you're interested in that.
I think probably Rehoboths don't, right?
Yeah, those are the two that don't, and I think there's actually, I believe there's two more on there, if I'm not mistaken, which I thought was maybe.
I believe that Mr. Highest can correct me, but I believe the intentions of the sticker fees to help to offset the tenant's salary. So when that, yeah, tax on that.
Yeah, and that's, and that was when I, the people I have talked to, that is the intent of their permit and sticker fees at the transfer station is to offset the cost of the actual transfer station and not so much the cost of curbside pickup.
So county, town, when we receive the money, it just goes in general, though, right?
Yeah.
Um, but to that point, um, do we know how many of these communities operate, are these efforts as part of the enterprise fund?
Uh, I don't, but I could probably pick off two of them, because I'm going to, uh, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that the couple of communities that are into like that regional transfer station probably have some kind of enterprise fund going to a certain degree. Because there are some things that are being dropped off there that, um, the town's collecting. So like, there was one of them, I think it was Westminster, and they had like this really weird thing where, um, you go over to the regional facility, you pay to dispose the stuff there, but at the same time, you have to go to the DPW to collect your sticker and tags, to put on your stuff to bring over there, so the town's getting the, a pot too, okay? Yeah.
Yeah, like I'm just wondering, because with an enterprise, so with enterprise fund, you're not gonna have any other, so like any other revenues of, you know, that really in essence helped to subsidize the real cost. So, oh, you know, and, and with an enterprise fund, you wanna have a decent retained revenue. So, so basically you want to op- operate the fund like your business, whereas in, so like whereas in a municipal budget, like we do an indicting. Uh, uh, we nominally use non, uh, you know, non-solid waste related revenues to offset the costs of what we're dealing with.
Yeah, yeah. And an enterprise fund may be something that once you have whatever information that I can give to you, maybe you get to the end of it and you're like, hey, the transfer station should have an enterprise fund.
And we talked about a revolving fund, uh, a year or so ago, and that kind of didn't go anywhere either. Uh, I guess it's a lot of work.
But that'll only work if your revenues exceed your costs, we're not doing that right now.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, you're close, so, you're close, but you're not quite there.
If you factor all that costs in, I don't think you're that close, but.
It, it does appear that, at least in a snapshot look with what I've done, that the town may need to increase some costs a, a little bit. I mean, I don't know, you know, obviously like when it comes to like the whole mattress thing, I mean, you know, you start talking a hundred dollars to disposing, you're only charging twenty-five dollars. You know, I, I don't know if you increase it to a hundred, but obviously there would have to be some increase from where you're at now. But I think across the board, I mean, if you, you know, if you come back and, and just look across the board. You're talking, and again, this is per item average, this is only an average per item. You know, if you increase, you know, a dollar or two here and there for an item, a dollar or two there for an item. It's gonna, you know, it's gonna bring you more to that net, to that net zero. And now it sounds like you're within about five thousand dollars, give or take, somewhere in there. So, you know, a little bump here and a little tweak there, because at the same time, you know, you don't want sticker shock, right? So like, you know, if you go from charging, you know, ten dollars to, to dispose of a couch, and now all of a sudden next week you're charging thirty. People are gonna be like, whoa, whoa, hold on here, what are we doing, you know? So it's that, it's finding that fine line, you know, choose all the way where you wanna, you're gonna charge appropriately, but, you know. It'd be fair to the residents all at the same time, it's kind of a nice dance, but scuffing issues too much.
This is a question of Tom Faric. Tom, what's your relationship like with the public courts in Rocco with?
I, I don't even know what they are now, they buy it, they.
Right, but did they have a problem, they charged a hundred and seventy dollars for mattresses, did they have a problem with disposal on the side of the road?
No.
You don't know if they did or if they didn't?
I don't know.
Okay.
Good question. Excellent question.
A couple of these towns. If we're at over ninety, and I'm concerned last week or two weeks ago was they're gonna end up on the side of the road, and I know Ken had asked me that question. But if they're charging one seventy, I drive through Rehoboth, I'm not gonna say a lot, but a number of times per day. And I don't see piles of trash everywhere.
Really clean town.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's weird, you know, when you look at Rehoboth, because they use the punch card system, and you look at the sheer amount of punches it takes to get, uh, you know, an object like a mattress and stuff disposed of. It's incredible that as many people use that transfer station as they do. Cause it, it's, it's a really, it's a high price.
The other excellent question is they use an Titan button to get rid of the mattresses.
You discovered my secret.
And some of those towns, when it comes to the mattresses too, some of the towns did, um, they did run a, like a donation uh, sort of thing where if you could bring your mattress there and somebody, I don't know who, would inspect it. And if they deemed it worthy to be repurposed to maybe somebody that was in need, they were repurposing, I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know about that, but it was literally only one. It was one, and I think it was Lancaster. I have to go back and, and check, cause I have a lot of other information, but.
Yeah.
I remember my knee jerk reaction, because it says, you know, will not accept mattresses that are like stained, ripped, and then has an infestation. I went, I would not want that job, you can, I don't know if you could pay me enough, I'd be like, no, no. So, um, but this is gonna be updated, um, between now and, you know, my, my project is, project's due, I think, December eleventh. But I will continue to update it beyond that, if this is rolling past it with more information, so.
Uh, what fees do you, um, research, how long have they been, are they like, have they been fluctuating with these like, these have been like for past few, for the past five years?
That, I'm not sure, I, I would assume that the fees have increased steadily, you know, to, to save the economy, but.
Like they can increase in nine point three or, I don't know.
I, I mean, I could find these questions out, sure.
Do you hear at home, based on the contract and the disposal, uh, disposal contracts, we have to re-know what are they actually accepting these, these items actually cost us today to get rid of?
No. And you know, you know what, you know what will help that too, though, is like, um, so I know there was mention of talking about, uh, a point of sale, basically a point of sale system.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that would, that would help, um, because then at that point, you know, you may be able to say, okay, if somebody comes in with, say, a couch. You charge them for the couch and then have us, you could have a standalone large furniture, say dumpster. You say, okay, we got ten couches over the course, over the course of the year. We know they went in this dumpster, this dumpster cost is this much to take away. But until you start tracking that data, lo- locally, you know, somehow, whether it's electronic or not, you're really, that, that would be tough to nail down. Because right now, if I'm not mistaken, like if I can bring, say, my recliner there Saturday, that I get charged a fee and it just goes into whatever dumpster's next, right? Yeah.
Yeah, we, we don't, we, we can't quantify any of that stuff.
Right, right. But that, that sort of system over time, you know, it may take you a year or two to get to that point before you can really nail it down.
That doesn't mean we can't come up with a plan to cut our operating costs, though, as long as we know what our annual costs and revenues are, we can remedy this out.
This is like Fonzie jumped in the kiddie pool instead of the shark tank, I think at this point. I mean, if you're looking to close a gap of five thousand, even if you want to make up a little bit more revenue to kind of get five thousand under your belt to flow over into the next year. Just by tweaking a fee or two here or there, depending upon what the volume is. You know, again, it's, it's tough to say, what do you tweak when, you know, we're not tracking how many VCRs are dropped off? How many refrigerators are dropped off, you know? So it's kind of like, uh, there's a lot of moving parts, but if you get a couple of the right pieces in place, it's gonna really help this take off and get it to where it needs to be. Which right now, through this cross, costs don't go up too much. You know, I, I feel like you're at least close. I mean, if your bottom line is a five thousand dollar difference at this point, you know, you, it should be an easy gap to cover initially. So at the end of the year, your overall numbers are hopefully the same, but we're at least close, you know? The only thing I need to find out, and I haven't asked a question yet, because I was on vacation for the last five days up until yesterday. Um, was how much of this town's, what percentage of the tax dollars go towards solid waste program?
Well, that'll be my presentation.
Oh, you have that, okay.
The next page in the.
I just have nothing to ask that question, so, okay, yeah. That, that would be something useful, because that's another question I'm seeking to have answered as I talk to these communities is, okay, so for example, like Shirley, Halifax, Westminster, you're not charging the transfer sticker, okay, great, you have curbside pickup, excellent. How much of your tax base is, is being used to absorb that, that curbside cost? Cause that'll help a little bit too, give you some clarity. Cause you know, if your, your percentages say, I'm picking number three percent, and everybody else is at four percent or five percent, you know?
How much or what materials are moved from the transfer station in bulk? I, I'm trying to get, you know, like you mentioned VCRs. Do you know how many VCRs are taken in during the course of the year? So they are placed in a dumpster, I would imagine, can, and taken off-site. So you don't have a tone, it's just by bulk?
Yeah, they pick it up by weight.
Weight?
We'd have to have a POS, uh, electronic device that the attendant uses to log in what they're disposing of in order for us to quantify that.
But VCRs, I'm using this as an example, weigh individually a certain weight. And you have a total weight, you could figure approximately a number by dividing.
Yeah, and that's why some towns divide it up, because VCR is heavier than a DVD player. So they're getting really down to the, to fine tuning it. I don't.
Yeah, some of those spreadsheets, you're right, some of those spreadsheets were up forty, fifty items long, because they broke it down so much. Yeah, some of them were incredibly particular. And then we had, there, there were a couple times of like, ah, come on in, here's the category, you know? They have seven categories, and if it kind of fit into this one, it must be the judgment of whoever's collecting it, you know? Hey, your couch looks like a microwave, because I like it a lot, sure, it's three bucks instead of twenty.
Now, the second question that I have is, Jim had mentioned soft fees, or administrative fees as I call them. We don't take that into consideration too.
Um, no, well, he.
If we set a fee structure.
When the fee structure was set, I don't believe that was taken into account. We're working on trying to put some of those numbers together now to add to the whole process.
That's important if you're trying to offset the cost to, to the taxpayer, so.
Um, um, one other thing, like I don't want to like open up the whole camera booth either, but, uh, were you, uh, so like regarding the analysis you did for the transfer station analysis, did you anticipate trying to break down a, a oven, you know, like as much as we can, apples to apples view of how, of how these or other towns deal with curbside?
Uh, yep, so I thought about that, and then when I started figuring it out, I can do that. And I'm willing to do it, but it's gonna take me a long time. Be only because some of these towns have fifty different items, you know, and then we'll have to, and we can go item by item. Um, but that's gonna take, it's just gonna take a long time, so.
So, so what do you mean by items with curbside?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, with the curbside pickup.
Right, Mr. Mull is talking about actual trash bag pickup. So I think the, the, just my suggestion is if you just pick two communities equate, equate, equal in size to us. And just get that data, that may give us something to work off.
Sure, yeah, I can do that, that's, yeah, that's, that's, then that's an easy kill.
So voting approved.
Sure.
So like again, based on that, I mean, obviously if we're looking at this, so if we're looking at the whole picture. Oh, yeah, there could exist a possibility where based on, uh, how the curbside is made to work. It trends, one community's transfer rates, especially with an enter, with an enterprise fund, uh, oh, yeah, that, so one could actually be affecting the other in terms of the rate.
Yes, yeah.
And so that, so that, so that, so that insert could actually be skewing in a way, the data we're looking at here.
Yep.
As I look at the numbers, two thousand twenty-two, I notice the transfer station that currently is running in deficit. Why is that the case?
But we're not there yet, that's my presentation, we're still on this.
Is this so, okay, I'm not trying to take your, take your, is it a good time to transition, maybe?
No, no. Well, I, I think we're done with, yeah, we can come back to him, but I think once we do mine, we'll talk him stuff together, and then we can move forward to the next page.
I'm done. Is there anybody else, yeah?
Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll be here all night.
Thank you. So do you have any questions for who that's?
Uh, Michael, Tom, Bill, the presentation, uh, following your idea.
That's the next page in your packet.
They give you a package, Sean?
Yes.
Okay, so the next page in the packet. Um, we've been compiling these numbers for years, which is why I did this part of the analysis. But I've been adding snow lines and stuff to it, at some point, this, these numbers are gonna go. But I've been adding scorelines and stuff to it. At some point, this, these numbers are going to go, obviously you can add it to his analysis and hopefully put it all together. But, um, this is a lot of pages and I boiled it down to just summary data for everybody here. So you see, uh, the curbside, the yellow columns on the left. Down below, the revenue includes trash bags, trash bags only. Uh, the cost include Voyager Brothers for the curbside collection and the disposal fees for disposing of the trash and recycling. The revenues, uh, come in, um. Uh, obviously, like, say, it's just trash bags. Then you go to the next two columns, transfer station. Those revenues are from stickers, fees, metal, and bulky item week. And the costs are basically to get rid of everything. And, um, including the salary, but then again, no soft costs involved in any of this. So then the blue columns is the entire solid waste program, the cost and revenues. And then you can see a bunch of columns off to the right, which, you know, is the percent that the revenues are covering the costs. And yes, just see the transfer station, the, the, the revenues are only somewhere around eighty to ninety percent of where the revenues are, I mean, not the costs. The trash bag curbside pickup, the numbers we're dropping, you see it was at sixty-six percent. That's when we raised the price of trash bags, um, to get back up to where we were historically. Where the bag revenue is only covering about seventy-seven percent of the cost. And then you can also see, if you look at the bag revenue compared to the entire curbside cost, it's only somewhere below fifty percent that it covers. So the entire program costs around two hundred dollars per house, run the entire curbside program, like a hundred and seventy-five dollars per house. Um, if you look at it that way, and then you look at, um. You know, how much could, you, you can look at it that way if you want, like the, the cost per house, but the revenues are about a hundred dollars. I have to, just one quick second, Peter Board just, he's giving me a number. If you. I am, what's the number? Okay. Yep. Oh, okay. And how many do they fit in the truck? Okay. All right, good enough. Okay, good enough for tonight. Um, we'll follow up later. Thank you. Sorry about that. I was, I reached out to Peter Board just about mattresses, how many can fit in the container, um, which will play into the discussion later on. So anyhow, this is a kind of it in a nutshell when everything boiled down, like say, I, I don't know if we really want to get into the mini-gritty of how much revenue we have from, you know. You, you know, how much costs does he weigh each year and all the rest of it again. This is just the boil down for where the costs are. But it shows that we need tax dollars to cover it. So, um, if anybody's got any questions? In money walk, though, you had a question.
So I have a question. The, I know the pandemic was part of increasing revenues because people were getting rid of stuff. Is that why in twenty twenty we see such a substantial increase from year to year? We're almost forty grand in one year and fifty-two the following year?
So if you remember my first presentation at the, the first meeting, we increased by approximately forty pounds of trash per year per house. Um, and that was the increase in trash bags, yes.
So. Um. Is that same for the transfer station?
Uh, for the transfer station, no, there was not really an increase per household. In what was going bulky. We were seeing an increase in cardboard.
Did we do a fee change in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
We did. We raised the price of trash bags.
Not transfer station, no. So what explains the twelve thousand dollar increase in revenues from year to year? And that's been sustained over the past two to three years. It's actually gone up from there.
Yeah, so.
Is that management oversight?
The big, the big cost is household house waste day is about ten thousand dollars. And we haven't had one since twenty twenty.
Time on the revenue side, time.
Oh, sorry, um, on the revenue side, uh, at the transfer station.
Because we're going to get into fee changes, but I, I need to know why there was such an increase in revenue. There has to be some reason that we had that much of an increase in revenue. It could be as simple as management oversight, I don't know. Because if you don't oversight oversee the stuff coming in properly, then it doesn't get charged off properly.
So where do, where do you see this way?
From nineteen to twenty?
Well, the bulky week alone was a five, four thousand dollar increase, um, and what people put out that one week. So again, that was a significant portion of it. And the landfill fees went up about six thousand dollars from the year before.
This is every fucking second. That's about the time we had to monitor.
Right.
That was also the sort of program I'll add. The deals are substantial. I think we had to do a transcript presentation.
So are you guys. So I think, are you guys talking about expenses and in general, there's something about revenue?
We're talking about revenues. Expenses.
So going from the thirty-nine five to the fifty-one, correct?
Right, exactly. And then it's sustained. It went up another five and then it was almost even.
Okay, all right.
So why is such a big change?
We don't have the volume numbers, Jim. If we had the volume numbers of trash, uh, curbside pickup.
But here's my, here's my point.
We sold more bags is what I'm trying to tell you.
No, 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 transfer station, forget about bags, transfer station, forget about bags.
Okay.
You own, you go from a cost of fifty-six and change to sixty-two, which is only a six thousand dollar increase. But you had a twelve thousand dollar increase in revenue. So there had to be a triggering event to do that. If we didn't change fees, it had to be something else.
We had about a twenty-one ton increase, um, in, in the bulky waste that came out of it.
Did we have a new attendant idea?
I don't think so. Was it Pope? Was that when Joe left? I don't remember where Joe left. I didn't very remember.
There wasn't any great conservatives.
No, but Tim Reins was there for a couple of years. Wasn't that the guy for Tim?
He's just the two names.
I'm sorry, yes, Jim, Joe Reins, but the guy for Joe, or Tim Reins, Mr. Reins. He might have been around twenty twenty because he was here for a couple of years.
He's done too.
Is it done? I know that the attendant changed from, I've only been here five years and the attendant changed and then Mr. Reins was there for a couple of years and then Mr. Lawrence.
I think it changed, no, that's what he was doing.
But again, it was a, a twenty percent, so it was like a ten percent increase in the tonnage. That came in there. And yes, some of it might be the attendant, what's a half load and what's a full load and because a lot of it is subjective.
So that's my point. My point is if we're gonna start recommending fee schedule changes. And we can simply increase our revenues through proper management oversight, then how much do we really need to change the fees? Because the raising the fees affects the consumer.
Right.
It also affects, to, to Ken's point, we might have trash on the roads, for health. So I think that we really need to get a handle on is are things being managed and overseen properly? Will point POS help in all that? Because we'll make the investment with POS if the revenues go up without changing the fee structure. Which it seems that's what's happened here. It seems like there was a management change in the way that we, we, we charged. And we saw a spike in revenue. So we really don't, to your point, we're not, we're even less further apart if we just manage it differently. And that, that's not poking fun or, or blaming anyone, that's simply an observation.
So the other thing that hit that here was we also had about a ten percent increase in the number of stickers sold. So that, that increased too, because a lot of people were cleaning out the basement to poke an inch.
How much is a sticker?
Fifty dollars. A gracious deal fluctuated of that time.
Yeah, the disposal cost didn't go down, so.
Uh, yeah, no, the revenue.
Right.
The revenue went down.
Question.
But it's, it's quite difficult that time.
Well, we didn't get rid of much because it was, yeah.
What impact did COVID have on waste?
Huge.
So, um, the curbside, the curbside program increased about, uh, what's that? About a hundred pounds per year per house. The bulky didn't really change. I mean, sorry, the recycling only went up about twenty pounds per house. And the bulky waste, again, we went up about twenty tons, but I, but I think that's a function of people cleaning out their houses and throwing away the bulky stuff. But yes, there was an increase in the volume of trash coming out. We went from less than sixteen hundred tons to over seventeen hundred tons of trash a year.
Okay, no problem.
So just in that context, the curbside, is that, is that reflected in the jump from three ninety-five to four eighty?
Right.
Uh, on the curbside class? From twenty nineteen to four twenty, would that explain?
No, that was a new three-year contract. The contract ran from twenty twenty, this is the start of it. Yeah, because it just ran out in twenty twenty-two, so it was twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, yeah, so that was the new contract. That also reflects those higher costs, reflect the field search I've been getting hit with too. So I, and this is, I, I kind of wish we could have records of when the solid waste committee started and when we created pages, growing, whatever. What percentage was the bag supposed to be paying of the curbside cost? And, and I understand there's recycling and recycling was free to residents, but should the prices of bags be covering the price of the curbside trash pickup? You know, should the revenue from the transfer station cover the taxes from the transfer station? These are.
Yes.
Questions, yeah, but these are one thing when it's all started.
Right.
This would be going way back now. What was the intention?
Yeah.
How much was supposed to be the burden of the taxpayers, so?
It becomes a user fee.
Yes.
We can charge more for, for items that they're going to drop off than a likely tax increase, but. To me, user fees are, uh, if you don't wanna have waste, don't create it. I, I'm not so sure that the residents of Titan would stop dumping trash inside the road because user fees went up. Because if you haven't done a crash inside the road, you're doing it now regardless. I don't see all of a sudden mattresses appearing, uh, just out of, out of respect for the residents of Titan. But, um, I'd rather see a user fee than an, an increase in taxes to offset the cost that, that we have.
And I think that's the charge of this committee is we need to really vet this and see what's best for Titan and for the people and to, to control our solid waste stream.
Right. We can't do anything getting the costs down. We, Voyager's probably giving us a rough line of price to begin with.
Do we know if we're still recording? There's no signal.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's just on my computer. It's just the input. It's like this little body thing. Are we recording?
Like I said, I don't think our costs can go down anywhere. Uh, with the exception of maybe mattresses, just because of what you've done, getting it, it, their price for the disposal.
Yeah, but it's still higher than fifteen dollars.
It's still higher, but it's not ninety. So if we go up to thirty-five, if that's what it is, then, uh. But mattresses today, most companies take the mattresses away when you buy them. At least Jordan's does and Carby's does, all the big outfits. I can't say for where mom and pop stores where they do that. But I, I don't see a lot of, we buy mattresses every few years, three, four years. And, uh, I'm never going to throw mattresses out because where we go and we buy it has always just taken away as part of the so-called deal that you get.
Well, we were guesstimating because we don't count, somewhere around two hundred a year is what we take away.
Okay.
When the school has their mattress sale, they do not, my understanding, they don't take any of them away.
They don't take them away.
So, and we need to work those down.
Next week, yeah. Right, next week. Eleven.
This is sort of a comment and a question, um, because you made a good point. It, it would be tough to cut costs. But is, is there a cost savings if we clean up particularly our transfer station waste? You know, by, by separating things more and having more containers available, can we?
So that would make more, if you can separate the plastic, put number one over here, number two over there, you can get a higher price for it. So you can separate the paper and the cardboard, you can get a higher price for it, yes. That, that means a lot more bins and we gotta start keeping stuff dry and anything else.
It probably means another body at the transfer station.
Or a more organized system.
You may change, you may change this destination.
Yeah, that too, because you find a different vendor that would buy it like that.
You might get more, but you might be paying more for the mileage.
But the volume that we send out of the transfer station, I don't think is enough to warrant that. If the entire town was bringing the recycling there, then it would be, might be worth investigating. But for the seven hundred people to buy stickers, I don't think it's gonna be worth it.
What did you say? It was twenty-one tons you got rid of there? Was that the COVID one?
No, that was the bulky, yes. That doesn't count the single stream recycling or any of that. I don't have those tons.
Right. Right.
Actually, the single stream recycling cuts the cost of the pickup. But it adds to the cost of processing. Because.
Can you say it again? I missed it. I'm sorry.
The si- the single stream recycling reduces the cost of pickup.
Yep.
Of, uh, holler, but it increases the cost of processing because it's gonna get broken down. It's contain, a lot of contamination because people don't clean their things. Um, we've pushed that for a long time trying to get people to, that alone will cut costs. Uh, reducing contamination. What's there? I mean, people throw pizza in the, in there, you know, everything, so, so. It's kind of difficult to get, you know, a lower the price when, when I'm getting cooperation.
Right. You're not getting clean recyclables.
Which brings us back to the education component and that recycle IQ thing that DEP wants us to stand.
Right.
So.
I think the board helps, I'm off the video.
That's a good idea, actually.
It is, yeah. It's a great idea.
Yeah, it's from business, I mean, from experience.
The, uh, you know, with BP coming on board, whether it's going to be a, a debt exclusion or, or, or. If it doesn't pass, then we're looking at cutting taxes substantially, not taxes cost substantially. And I think one of the things is going to be, uh, waste. It's, it's gotta come from somewhere.
I tried to tell people once, I think we should eliminate curbside pickup.
Yeah.
Uh, I took a meeting, did it while I was on Facebook, I'm sure that's why, but. It's very in, in all reality, if you think about it, I mean, we'd have to staff the transfer station.
Right.
Uh, we would say, what, seven hundred thousand a year or something on, on curbside pickup?
For both the, do you want to eliminate both or just recycling?
Wow, so.
No, everything.
Hi, so.
Yeah, so you were saying it's how the residents.
Yeah, that's what we always does and you're still gonna buy your own bags.
You still pay a hundred and seventy to get rid of your mattress?
Yeah, a hundred and seventy for mattresses.
We would, we would really have to vet that option before.
No, you're not.
That, that would, I think I would support a user-based fee structure before I would support that.
Right.
Uh, but that would mean you would remove that from the tax base and you'd probably have to have an enterprise system.
Right.
Which would be a much deeper discussion.
Yeah.
So. A lot of towns work that way.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that tax base will stomach paying for the services of curbside pickup. Then going to a transfer station. And then you assess the user fee part, well, my house might have seven bags, your house might have two. Right. Why should I be paying for seven bags for somebody else? So take a, take a closer look at the fee of the bag. Right. Be more prudent. When was the last bag increase? That wasn't easy.
Not a journey.
June twenty twenty. Twenty twenty. It still just had this, to have the discussion on the agenda is, uh, not an easy thing. Yeah. We took a lot of. I'm sure. But it's, it's responsibility. And if you, the more time goes by, now you're creating a bigger gap. Yeah.
It's only been raised twice like over the last twenty years.
Yeah.
You know, like from a one to one fifty to two, so it's not like we've had a lot of increases when you consider that.
The cost is one of the.
Cost of our.
Transportation, gasoline.
I I think if it was explained to most people, they would take it. As as opposed to a a blanket tax increase because just like you said, you're gonna have somebody who says I don't generate trash, why am I paying an extra twenty, thirty bucks on my taxes for people who generate trash?
Right.
So arguably, they already are and have been based on the reasons that we're seeing if it's for you, yeah.
Well, based on the some of the say, um, they are, if it's explained to them that we're gonna have a user fee. I just think that could be more educated to the public where they they'd accept it.
Right.
Well, you already have it, we'll reevaluate it.
Right.
Thinking thinking in a in a very linear pattern and based on Todd's very eloquent and detailed presentation at the last meeting, we can easily see that the costs of disposal are escalating almost out of sight. So the only way, in my opinion, to your point earlier, is you have to target the creator of the waste.
Right.
Period.
Yeah.
If people, the consumer pays based on the waste that they're creating, then they're gonna think twice about creating so much waste and and thinking more about even buying their packaging in the store, they may think twice.
I was just gonna say, you go to home people now and look at the carriages, people take the uh people for TV, they take the TV out of the box and leave the box in the carriage.
Right.
If you get that, let let Walmart dispose of it.
Yeah. Right, right.
But you again, you don't see those along the side of the road. But if you say you have to dispose of it at home, you less have to to buy a new TV maybe or um
Right.
actually generating that trash.
I I think this is all encompassing, like the charge of this committee was very expansive. It take, it's gonna take thoughtfulness, it's gonna take fiscal responsibility, and it is most certainly gonna take education.
Right. Well, Todd had said that the very first meeting, it was gonna be a lot of work and more than what we've put in. I wonder if a subcommittee is an answer.
That's what this is.
Yeah.
No, no, it's a subcommittee of this.
Subcommittee, I.
I think we have a good group here and it's gonna take time.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Especially something as big as this.
Yes.
This is all encompassing too, you know, how it's actually affecting us financially and what that means too.
So to 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 wrap it up, you go to the next page, this is our current transfer station rates, I notice it's twenty twenty-one at the top. We didn't change the rates, it's still the same as twenty twenty-one. The sheet after that is those um same costs in a spreadsheet where I've got a column for the solid waste committee that they're proposing and then we get the board of health on a voting after the recommendations from this debate. Which I know uh it doesn't sound like we're ready to make those recommendations at the moment to make all those, but at some point, we're gonna need to go down item by item and maybe even add in twenty more items or take away twenty items or do tiered systems for televisions or mattresses or whatever, so. But that's 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 set up for, um I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you wanna go through that tonight or you wanna wait until um Mr. Ernyston is announced.
We should wait until Mr. Ernyston announces and then we'll see.
You know, the questions come up, but.
So so what's the other question again?
Textiles and mattresses.
Okay, so so hopefully maybe we already have options for both of those, so.
Well, that's next on agenda.
Yeah. I mean, I just I mean, we know this is my thought, we know we're running, I mean, we're not, our revenues are not freaking even with costs, especially when we at the top. When we at the top, oh, when we at the top of costs and we know um ah from the analysis that Tom did, we may be behind in some things, but and there's, I'm seeing a lot, how do we, so like, oh, you know, for things that aren't, oh, you know, a mattress or are the are the textiles, how do we really how do we know what those things really costing us at this point? And then how do we come up with a number based on that?
Right.
I forgot a very important part of or option, privatization. We can also completely stop the curbside and do private pickup, which a lot of communities have gone to that. The community that I live in is private pickup, I pay a vendor directly to pick up my trash.
You would you get two regions?
Yes, yes, and those are provided by the company, I didn't pay for them, I just pay monthly fee for trash.
Right.
And they educate you on what to pick up very well.
Right, because they're not gonna pay, uh they don't they refuse because it's contaminated.
I'm not saying that's the answer, but we need to put that on the table and I think it has to be.
We're not paying for recyclers.
It's included, I I recycling bin?
No, now for us, if we charge to recycle here.
If we charge to recycle.
Right, in other words, we pay right now for trash bags for recycling, for for trash.
Right.
And recycling is free, but recycle cost is much more than than trash does.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
Actually, two things, one question and one statement. One of the things that I haven't heard mentioned is there are many people in the town of Dayton who can't physically or financially handle the burden of privatization or fee as you go. They rely on the taxpayers to help with the burden. You also have to take into consideration the convenience factor. It's a lot easier just to put your trash out on the corner, out from your house and not have to worry about it, making phone calls, tracking that when the guy is gonna come. So when we discuss, you know, the route to go, please don't or please take into consideration one, the convenience factor, and also those people in the community who really can't afford. One of the responsibilities that government has is to help individuals in their community who are disadvantaged, whether it be physically disadvantaged or financially disadvantaged. Government has a responsibility. And it's not an easy decision to make because there's a fine line between enabling and helping. But I honestly believe the community has a responsibility to help those who need, truly need the help. The second point is a statement that I just want to let solid waste in the board of health know. This is based on some concerns that have been expressed to me by members past and present of the board of selectmen. And also, um, I've seen some numbers here tonight that I think management needs a little bit more scrutiny. On Wednesday, September fourteenth, I will be proposing the establishment of a policy requiring all fee increases in contracts over a determined amount, dollar amount, made by non-elected boards and commissions to be approved by the board of selectmen. Board of selected, selectmen are accountable to the voters and taxpayers of the town of Dayton directly. And that with that being said, the board of selectmen, I feel, should have a voice in the establishment of said fees since we appoint the members of those appointed boards and commissions. And we, unlike those appointees, are answerable to the citizens of the town of Dayton directly. Thank you.
So I'll just throw down on the the cost of the curbside back to you, your question, the cost of curbside is. I know my neighbor has it and I think it costs like forty dollars a month or something, so about five hundred dollars a year. The average home, well, if you take the number of bags per, and total and divide it by the number of houses, comes out to about a hundred dollars in bags per year is what it's costing the each homeowner. Which is far less than the five hundred dollars a year for a private hauler to come to your house.
Yeah, but you have your practical cost in the tax base.
No, 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 I'm just saying that that's what it's costing them right now when they buy bags, it's costing them a hundred dollars. Right. That doesn't include the other, I I understand that, but I'm saying people, if you try and can't quadruple the price of trash bags because of the money of private or whatever, so it's there's a line now.
We have a good amount of people that choose to pay the tax for the curbside pickup and still have a private hauler come.
It's not a hundred.
There's a few, yeah.
So it's about a hundred, a hundred and three thousand.
I I I'm not, I haven't made a decision either way, it's still too early in this discussion. But I can tell you from my experience, I've been living with private pickup for fifteen years, I've never had an issue with pickup, ever. The only thing I've issue I've had is I've been uneducated in the trash that I'm throwing in the barrels and the hauler didn't show that I knew what I shouldn't should put in there, that's it. And it was done in a very gradual way, you know, they left a paper right on my trash barrel, next time I won't pick up the barrel. But they vary a lot.
I'm not sure the town will drop.
Yeah, that's part of the recycling IQ, that I mean, because I, you know, it's a lack of standards.
Weird. This is a, this is a.
This is a whole lot too, like people don't realize.
And it's a, it's a service two ninety-five.
Right. You surround the.
I mean, the taxes are cheap, so we're paying for it.
Yeah.
Well, if you have to pay enough taxes, it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Not logical. We can free, we can talk about this.
Well, the option, I think it was coming.
Waste to us.
Yeah, it just it takes that dollar value for this contract.
Because the taxes was wasted.
Oh, I know.
What are we gonna do when you just hire guys or send them by recycling events? A hundred dollars, probably.
You know, you laugh, that's a great point. That's a great point, yeah. You should, you should bring that up.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, here's a great point to bring up.
Yes.
Very good.
What are we gonna do when gorgeous, if it won't gorgeous expire, so we, and we gotta eat no more manual pickup.
So what I was sugge- suggesting to Todd, and Todd I think this was a project for a little bit earlier, is that when their contract expires, we could have rather than take their trash to the transportation of just everything.
Eliminate the entire curbside program, just have everybody bring everything to the transfer station.
But that's contrary to us Chairman Hull's position that there are seniors, people, disabled people that don't have that ability.
Right. Yeah.
That's the thing, but just looking at the transfer station, if we have seven hundred households that buy stickers, and this is not counting cause math, this is, if you just increase, I know it's not same just, but the sticker from fifteen to twenty-five, you cover that seven thousand dollar deficit. The transfer station, not the curbside.
Right.
There are a lot of story under the card.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't matter.
There's a lot of that, I mean, there's a lot of different paths that we're going to come.
Yeah, yeah.
So would it be appropriate to table this discussion at this point?
Absolutely.
I think there's one other thing I'd like to see for the next meeting, uh the cost of the POS system.
Could have been costed out. Um, Mr. Paddy's proposed to capital outlay last winter in uh in capital outlay. Working on scheduling a meeting with them next week and um and to see if we can resurrect that uh that thirteen thousand dollar request uh for the POS. So we can uh we can hopefully be able to fund uh the POS system at the November special town meeting. So and then we can really implement it, like in big, and begin dating and building the data that's really going to need to inform how we go blow it.
I think you'll also see a revenue increase just by using the POS system, because you're trying what comes in.
Right.
Spend this, I was gonna say several man hours on processing, oh, you got it.
Let's try to be as convenient as possible. Okay, thank you.
Seven hundred, ten hundred. Yeah, awesome, I'll do the next one. We're gonna discuss that pink bag pickup.
So next I think, next I think in fact it is an email.
Oh, okay.
So have have a made field up at the top. Got the blue and green, some looks like a kind of little page.
So, um, um.
Oh, purple and green, it goes to black, like, sorry.
Based on the discussion, um at the last meeting, um I did reach out, uh we wrote a letter. I wrote a, I wrote a letter relating um to the to the contract that we began uh with simple recycling in two thousand eighteen and and then it was a proposed um by the board of health, had to be extended in October twenty one and um I would, you know, uh to which to which since then, uh simple recycling, um since earlier this year, hasn't been living up to by discontinuing the uh the curbside pickup. Um, and what we've heard uh that was once uh from simple recycling was essentially they can no longer live by the terms of the original, um the original, uh the original agreement. Uh, um, but because really the the agreement extension we had was never executed on their side, uh my interpretation is that we're just in really a mon- mon- contract, uh where there's a simple, uh with simple recycling uh that we can break over than thirty days notice at any time. So so we do have uh the ability to do that. Um, I would also learn is that, um, um, what the challenges that we've gone through with simple recycling, uh there have been another, there have been a number of our, you know, the developer community going through the same thing, and they've had to adjust and adapt as well. Um one of the, one of the companies that really are coming to really replace, oh, you know, like can really deal with the market, the gap that um uh the uh uh simple recycling uh has succeeded, uh gives uh is a company called HelpSee. Um, and just, um, um, they've been gaining a lot of traction uh here in Massachusetts, but apparently um in southeast Massachusetts as well, uh but the last time it was contracted. Uh, just, um, uh based on, uh they worked with one of my colleagues in Tinkbo in the month of, the month of August. Uh, my team's about diverted eight hundred and ninety pounds of uh like of clothes and other texts. Uh, oh, you know, like an, like another textile material from uh the uh the trash stream. Um, so, uh, uh, you know, if you want, uh if you want, I wanna hopefully get and get a few more references on HelpSee. Uh, but I do think based on, um, number one, the challenges we're facing and also the momentum, oh, you know, that, oh, you know, the board of health and our residents, oh, you know, really built through the pink bag, pink bag program, one of my worries is that uh the longer we go without our curbside pickup program, the less, oh, you know, the more momentum we're gonna lose. Um, uh, but, oh, you know, in terms of having everyone on board, what I would, I would, you know, recommend if it's all right with everyone, we could uh actually have the representative uh my part to uh from HelpSee today uh have to attend our next meeting and present exactly what they do. Uh, so then we can entertain exactly, uh because they don't only possess, they don't only provide our curbside. Uh, so then we can entertain exactly, uh, because they don't only possess, they don't only provide, uh, curbside pickup, uh, they provide, uh, they do, uh, they do have bin programs. Um, uh, and they also deal with, uh, with books and other things as well, so maybe having them at our next meeting, we can actually see what, um, oh, you know, they could offer that, uh, we could take advantage of, but also replace, oh, you know, frankly, replace where we are with Simple Recycling at this point. Anyone tend to see those are questions on that?
I agree, because there's been a reference of transportation lab now, you know, we're gonna be able to back. And I just, like, we don't have any right now, so I like this idea, um, reading through it, um. Do they provide a long bag, just like, does something that we can find ourselves with that?
Um, so that is one of the things I want to dive into more, uh, with HelpSee, because one of the changes uh, that would happen as well is, from what I understand, they would do curbside pickup, uh, but it would be a curbside based on a buying appointment basis, they wouldn't, uh, they wouldn't have what, uh, our Simple Recycling did, they wouldn't have someone follow around with, uh, like a girl on the same day. Oh, you know, like it borders, uh, in a particular area of town, oh, like they would have, oh, you know, there would, oh, and there would need to be some, oh, you know, engagement from our residents, you know, to make the phone call to HelpSee to schedule it. Oh, you know, I mean, and that would frankly come down to the public education awareness piece. Uh, but, oh, yeah, but as I mentioned, I did, I'm speaking with a colleague, uh, here, uh, that just in the month of August alone, Tinkbo was able to divert, uh, eight hundred and ninety pounds, so it's, oh, you know, oh, the model is working, it's, uh, you just, we have to help our residents understand what the model is and we feel that.
Right now, we're doing about three thousand pounds of long to the pink bags.
I think the residents are used to bringing to the transportation.
Mm-hmm.
So I know you said, I kind of fit in this package, they provide a home, um, bin.
Mm-hmm.
While we, if we can't allow us to keep a bin at a transportation hub, the residents show up, they're, they're buying, when they're doing the pink bag program. That way they don't have to pull up.
So they could have the options.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, I mean, like, talking with them, they could, oh, you know, they could, yeah, they could provide curbside, they could provide a bin. Oh, you know, oh, you know, they have like a few options, and we just think, oh, you know, like have, oh, oh, to really choose what option really makes sense for they, with them.
So, the appointment option, in my opinion, makes the company police the items in the bags. If we do a bin, we have to self-police what's in the bags. So, that's my only concern there. Ken, and I, and I don't want to overthink this, but we're trying to talk about revenues, revenues, you know, I agree that this program is widely successful. What is the cost of a bag? Because they're not providing bags, HelpSee.
It's.
Uh, it's in the front, yeah, it's, it's in the trash bag, it must be a flushable bag. So that means the consumer's twice that.
We got prices for these bags, we weighed it out, we talked about it, and I remember what the price is, it was like ten cents a bag.
Does it make sense for us to print bags? HelpSee, call this number when you're ready for pickup, hundred dollar bag, it's a lot of revenue source. People are getting that out of the waste stream.
Right.
Um, and we have, we don't have a bin to worry about, you know, the, I, you don't have to go searching for the contents, right on the bag.
Right.
I, I wouldn't want to charge for the bags personally, but.
Oh, that's something we can discuss.
Yeah.
Because it's the same price as a trash bag, so why would they go make special effort to get a pink bag for the same price as a trash bag?
All right, I don't know, that's why I just go out there, so. So.
But the cost, what we say about taking it out of the waste stream, I think offsets.
All right, so let's quantify that for a minute, how many bags would you say equates to the amount of weight that you, you just said?
Um, let's say about twenty pounds per bag, so, plus that fifteen hundred bags.
Okay, so it costs us a hundred fifty dollars a month, makes sense, or, right? Give the math quick.
Yeah, that's right.
Fifteen hundred, a hundred fifty dollars a month. So, I, I think keeping three, how much is it, three thousand pounds or so?
Oh, but I, I made my math, I think, was about, because if I divide three thousand by twenty pounds, it might be thirty pounds in bags too, which means now there's a hundred bags. A ten cents a bag would be ten dollars worth of bags.
Okay, and get, to get rid of that, we know how much it is per ton, right, to get rid of solid waste?
Yep, seventy-eight dollars a ton.
So, the same amount.
Even in three bags.
The ten cents a bag is printed bag?
Yeah, I mean, roughly, I got the prices back in the office.
Can we, can we nail that down for the next meeting, or do we might make that decision today?
On whether we should print the bags.
Well, yeah, we're gonna do it, why don't we go all in?
So by the next meeting, I mean, we will have a representative here, uh, for further discussions as well, so we can,
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, do that, I can actually be ready, I mean, I think really to begin moving on, actually more the themes of the next meeting.
So is that in form of a question, or?
Statement.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot you said you were gonna come to the last meeting, so.
My joke's practical.
I'm sorry. It's only like fifteen dollars.
Yeah, I mean, like, if that's, I mean, I just wanted to throw that out there, rather than like rushing into something, we can all really understand what the program is, what they offer, and what the program does.
Yes, having advantage of the transfer station is better than just pumping up the bags outside, I agree with that. But, right, whether we wanna do it or not, but we have a bylaw in town, so we can't have those bins, so it's likely we'd have to vote to allow that and replace it. But I think of being behind the fence, it's far more less likely, and then people dump in their trash in it.
Right, I figure we sell more like gears, you get them off the streets.
It doesn't seem to be any convenience to the consumer to come in and get pink bags, because everything bag has to be picked up from the, from the health's office right now. Um, so, you know, I, to me, it doesn't seem like it would be overly intrusive to do something similar, to keep it organized, and then we don't have to police the, the bin, it's just my opinion.
So, the next item will be scheduled in the next meeting, and then we would invite them to come into it, that's the thinking.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So you wanna go, because it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Get rid of it.
So, uh, schedule the next meeting. So, um, I'm going away next, um, on October. Uh, Jim, did you say you're going away too?
I'll be in training the first week of October, and then I'm gonna go away, uh, end of the month.
The end, the end of October?
End of about, last two weeks, three weeks of October.
So it has to, who can?
I'd like you to be here. I'm on to work.
The twelfth?
I miss you guys.
Is the twelfth work for anybody?
Uh, next week, Wednesday, the twelfth of, of October.
Twelve, no. Of October?
I mean, I'm just, it's asking out loud, but to, I'll, uh, but to come up with a plan for the textiles, and I know the, so the Board Health also wants to, uh, enter into a contract for which is on the agenda of, um, for tonight's meeting.
The mattresses, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, for mattresses, does it make, um, does it make sense? I'm just asking to try to meet, but I just wanna.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna try to put it together, I think the mattresses gotta move at a constant speed.
So you're saying just have those two things on a meeting, but not wait a month before we meet again? That's what you're saying?
So, I mean, really, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'd like, I like, uh, we do have an interim plan. It sounds like for mattresses, but, I can do worry about the, in terms of the momentum we build for the Pink Bay program. That if we don't have, that if we don't have something that we can announce that really continues that, the momentum that the Board Health has really built, we're gonna lose that and end up paying for that if we don't, oh, you know, I give, so if the next time we meet is in more than a month from now, that's, that's my only thought.
So if then you want the representative from HelpSee just to come over here, then our next schedule, we need to have a day, just an evening, just for HelpSee and I said that.
I mean, that's my thought, though, I'm just one, one person with a lot of weird ideas, so.
So that meeting should take no longer than an hour tops, if that's all we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I would, I'm gonna try to take a lot of vacation time off for the next couple of months, but I'm not leaving, so I can have a night meeting if that, if need be.
I can come to that, to, just, just for the, for the pink bag program, or you can come for anything you need, for, um, that's any before, on, on Saturday.
Now, maybe we could, uh, have a drop-off location, and then try some company to come pick them up once a month, or?
They, they will, but we have to provide a bin, I don't wanna type bin, so we have to buy a bin.
So, prepare a bin, you know, that they can provide one? I don't have any idea, it's all the thing we have to.
Should we take two days for HelpSee?
What were you thinking, like, signature idea?
I'm. I mean, I'm from meeting, there is, um, uh, September twenty-first, just to stay with the after-meeting, half week for the water selectmen.
I have something to count about a day in birthday business, we need to.
Oh, shit, sorry. Yep.
It's okay.
Should we call it, please?
No, the FCC will, we will.
Did you get that camera?
Anybody available?
Get that camera?
Tuesday the twentieth?
Yeah, I guess I can, if I'm, if it's fifteen, I can be here.
Tuesday's.
Yeah, you say you can be here by about six on a Tuesday?
Right. So you want to do Tuesday the twentieth?
Of September.
Of September?
Yeah, I'll have to zoom in that meeting.
Yeah.
But, yeah. I can zoom in.
At six o'clock, six fifteen, is.
Six fifteen would be ideal.
Are you gonna reach out to HelpSee?
Yeah. Yeah, and sorry, that's why I have to zoom in.
I'll be okay with that. You're hard to sign, but, yeah.
Be all right.
Come on, Todd, we all have to HelpSee.
They don't wanna set a regular meeting date, as long as it's all, yeah. Did you go on October twelfth, was that the, that you suggested as a count?
Right.
So it's a Wednesday at five thirty?
Yeah. Right.
I'm actually in that week, so I'll, I won't be, I won't be off.
Okay, no. So that would work for you?
Yeah, so. Um, two weeks I'll be off.
Anybody have any objection?
We still.
October twelfth, five thirty?
Good mic.
What is happening there on the second one, we go, why am I asking, second, fourth, and first and third, I can't.
Second, fourth, I'll second and fourth.
So that would be the second.
I think right, that's first and third.
So, yeah, so the top is the second, right?
It's the.
Right. So that is the water selectmen meeting then?
But then you guys start meetings?
Six.
So that pushes it out to the nineteenth?
You can do Tuesday again, if you did it at, uh, six.
Tuesday the eighteen?
Oh, the eleventh.
Uh, can I go eleven?
Yeah.
I won't, I won't be here.
Okay. Sure, what happens November first, be that late?
No, we, we have a plan, so we're not going to, um, be fined or anything like that. Just a plan that we have, is, I don't wanna say not sustainable for, for long.
First week or whatever, I think?
The pink bag program, the wheels are made.
I have no, I think, yeah, I'm, I'm through that first, that first week.
So I'm at school at UMass, the first week of October, I can call in on whatever, if you, if you want.
So what's that?
Did you talk in the fifth?
Yeah, at a five thirty, I'm done with classes at five, so.
Everybody okay with that?
September.
Yeah.
Ten, five, Wednesday, five thirty PM. So we have our next.
We are on a point here, yeah.
So we have our next.
Tim, we're gonna be, hold on, six?
Five thirty, I think, works, we work till five thirty, so probably just keep it on.
It'll be.
Five thirty, we, we had a pop-up meeting that we.
Could have.
So. It ran longer, but it was.
Very recent pop-up.
It was a very good, it was a very good meeting.
It's been a, a totally fifth.
Right.
At five thirty.
Any trouble input?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna throw it there real quick, the Hazard Waste Day was a pretty good success, it wasn't under any such bad cars. A lot of, you don't have to bill for me yet, so I can't tell you how many tons of trash or whatever, but it was very successful. The, um, the people buying from ACV said it went very well, very smoothly, we did, started nine, and at seven forty-five, we had five cars lined up outside the gate. Uh, so the line was all the way down to Middle Street by the time we opened the gate, but, um, yeah, uh, that was successful.
You're busy all day long?
No.
No, no, by about ten thirty, the backlog was on, you could just throw it right in and write it off, so it worked out pretty well. So next year, I think we could short it to a four-hour event.
Oh, good thinking, we have much time next year.
It's too much. Well, I mean, you'd like to, we put in order for the budget, but we don't always get funded, so. Um, the only other thing is to get the mattress, we need your proposals, we can calculate the cost. So I, I, I took it off the agenda, um, it's Lawrence who put it on there, I took it off because I think the system, or it already had thing, that the Board of Health would be doing their thing tomorrow night, it's your pick, the company to go with. But, um, this committee wants to, first, we can certainly put on at the next, um, meeting.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll also probably give the email with that, Todd, that has more details in it.
Yeah, do they have a price to run the containment?
Yes, uh, we have the slide, okay, for pickup, for picking up. So.
So for the purposes of being consistent to making sure we, all, you know, all, all on the same page where we're going, do we want to table that, um, at the next meeting then, so we can all review that?
No, it's not on the agenda.
I took it off the agenda. So that's.
That's it, we're good. Because I thought that Board of Health was just gonna vote contract based on the two we had, I just, I, I didn't know if this committee was gonna look at them both and make a determination, so.
I think there's variables between the contracts that need to be vetted by this, by this body.
Can we give a review, or is?
Well, yeah, it's not on the agenda, so.
So, yeah, I told you, yeah. So, yeah, I think could we ask the Board of Health, um, to not take this matter off until there is a recommendation from the committee?
Need that in a motion, Mr. Chair?
I made a motion.
I'll make the motion.
You can.
I'll make the motion that this mattress contract not be committed by the Board of Health until a solid waste can be, makes its recognition.
I'll send it there.
Just can't lie, it was a motion.
You mean a motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's David.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, aye.
And then you approve the minute?
You approve of the minute?
So nobody got the August, the nineteenth one, so, everybody got the A and B. Somebody, I don't make motion approval, unless somebody's gonna change this.
I will make a motion, um, to approve the regular meeting minutes of June twenty-second, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, and July sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Tom, aye. All of the aye?
I will make a motion for a chair.
Second. All of the favor?
Aye.
Everybody?
Aye, both. I also, uh, the Board of Selectmen will need to make a motion to the chairman.
I'll make a motion to a chair.
Second.
Motion to the second, all of those in favor, Mr. Chico?
Aye for those.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Halls, and aye. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Um, on a different note, for our next meeting, everybody needs to think about it, uh, our clerk, our volunteer is the one who's gonna give us this part for this board, we need somebody.